Okay, my little air freshener.
Okay, call the meeting orders. Flip to the flag.
Allegiance is unified of the United States of America into a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Petrich.
Here. They have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, May twenty eighth, the special burden.
Who?
In a second.
Second.
Discussion, corrections. Everyone good? All right.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Since no one's here tonight, we'll dispense with that. Report from the codes enforcement officer. Mike came to our meeting a week and a half ago and presented his pretty much up-to-date report, so I don't think he has anything else to report right now. You do have a couple of letters of correspondence relating to some issues that he is working on. Report from the mayor. I'm just gonna remove my mask because I think I'm distance enough so I can breathe. Good evening, board members and members of the public. As we move into the fourth month of life in a pandemic, I thank all of you for your commitment to keeping yourselves and others safe. Life has changed, and it may never be as it was before. Face masks, standing apart, hand sanitizers, one-way aisles, and so much more have become the norm. It's difficult for us to adjust and accept these requests, and it is very evident in talking to many of you that people are struggling. Loneliness, frustration, disappointment of missed celebrations. But among this sadness, I also see families fishing along the banks of the great Shazie River, kids riding their bikes throughout the village, mothers and children geocaching and hiding painted rocks, youngsters flying kites, individuals getting, excuse the air quotes, beaned or whined, or kiddos getting smiles. Those are all efforts that have been going on in the community. So, many of you are making the best of difficult circumstances. On our part, the village has formed a health-safety plan for the office and the garage. The front door is unlocked. We ask that you wear a mask when you come in. If someone is already at the window when you arrive, please wait outside. We simply don't have the space for people to congregate safely. Bills may be paid in person, mailed, or dropped in the deposit box on the front of the building. The surfaces in the office will be cleaned frequently, and our goal, of course, is to keep the public and the employees healthy. I thank all of you who have completed the fire pit permit forms. Remember that these are required in order to have a recreational fire pit in the village. You can pick up the applications at the office. There is no fee for this permit, and in most cases, they can be processed the same day. Melody Trombley and Diane Morelli deserve a huge thank you for their help in organizing the hometown heroes banners. It's so important to recognize our local citizens who served our country. People have asked how to get a banner for a family member. The information and the applications are here at the office. These banners are purchased by the family and will be returned to them after several years of being displayed. And I'd also like to thank Mike and everybody else who helped put the banners up in the rain one day. Really, really appreciate that. And we are just so proud to be able to honor these heroes. Finally, I'd like to take a minute to discuss the fiscal constraints that the COVID-19 virus has placed on municipalities across the nation. I'm sure many of you have heard about this. Revenues for cities, towns, and villages come from property taxes, state aid, and sales tax money. Due to a decrease in sales tax income and an uncertainty about state aid, it is certain that we will be facing a shortfall in revenues. It's really too early to know what the decrease will be, but we are prepared to curb purchases and reduce spending. To that end, I want everyone to know that I am not going to draw salarios mayor of the village for this fiscal year. Again, I want to thank all of you, all of you and the public, for doing your part in staying healthy and looking out for each other. Let's remain champagne strong. All right, report from the trustees. Tom, you wanna start?
Sure. So first of all, I thanked him that day, but I wanna thank Woody for the tour of the water plant. The water board toured it this past Monday, and it was, he did a good job. I thought Woody did a very good job informing us on how it works and so on. He even discussed the generator because that became of interest as well. Our next water board meeting is June twenty-second. Juanita, do you think you could?
I'm working.
I know. If you need me to come in and sit with you on anything, let me know. I'd be glad to. But if you're able to get it for them, it'd be great. And have you had time, Mike, to put the labor in on the village side of that last document?
The last one? No, I didn't even know.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't need, your flushing you're doing right now, I won't need till the next.
No, I haven't had time.
I've had time.
We're, we're, we're doing a little flushing, fixing water main breaks right now, so.
Okay.
I don't, and I don't know when I'm gonna have time. It's gonna go from, if we don't keep moving, we're never gonna get our asphalt down. I mean, I'll give you, you can have whatever you got and pick through it, but I just haven't, haven't been able to. I mean, I'll have the labor from this one, where this one's done, or we can right now, but I didn't think I had to go back through the other one and try to break it all.
No, it was just labor from the village side we're missing. You had the water in both of them.
Yeah, I did.
And you had the labor on the town side. Was there anything I could do to help you with that? Would you get done this flushing maybe?
Well, if you wanna go with the guys this week, you can get this one.
School's closed, I'll take you up on that.
Not really.
Okay. Well, try to keep moving forward, but. Then, you all have copies of the quotes I got from the contractors regarding the concrete to secure the gateway for the kayak launch. Contacted a total of five. One declined due to sched, their schedule being too busy, two I haven't heard from, and I received these two. The quote at forty-nine thirty, we're looking at a three-week lead time of being able to do it within three weeks. And the quote of forty-eight eighty, he says at least two months out.
Well, if we wait two months, we're probably not going to really use it this summer.
Yeah, I know. I mean, they're both, they're both very close. I think they're both very, both very good contractors, but I will say the forty-nine thirty was extremely prompt. I had that quote the same night that we met that, that day. I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board, the rest of the board feels about it, but, and Mike, I would need you to just dig the hole. That does that cool digging. This is, this is that foundation for the, for a launch. Hold the name like.
So this is?
Mike, you wanna see?
Did you get closer these days?
Sure. The whole?
There's your water.
Pass it to the, is it?
Let's see the other one.
Where is it supposed to be, a pad, Tom, or do you have a picture, or?
It's a, it's a full foundation. If you look at it, there's a, there's a four-foot wall going in.
Forty-four foot long.
Mm-hmm. So it's, it's six foot wide, and so it's basically a pad, forty foot, foot thick, forty-four feet long, six feet wide, is that what it is? That's the cast that goes on it. No, there's a wall, there's a footer, so you guys dig a four-foot hole.
Yeah, the lights need to be on. Yep.
I thought it was getting a little dark during here.
Is it over here?
The camera may not, yeah, it's right by the fire line. Yeah, thank you.
So it's a, it's a, it's a foundation, a twelve-inch wall. Then they'll fill it.
No, that's for you.
And then put a four, four-inch cap on top of it, concrete slab on top.
I can see that's not bad.
So in other words, the, the bank is, is kinda like this, at the, at the river. This thing is gonna, gonna look like this. It's a little exaggerated, but that's the wall, which is, which is a square foundation. And then, and it's a cap over the top.
It just measures forty-four feet long. By twelve inches thick by six feet?
That's the walls. So it's forty-four feet, linear feet of walls.
Oh, not worth it.
Right, no, it's, it's, it measures six by sixteen. As you can see, the slab is six by sixteen by four. So the dimension is six by sixteen, and they both said they would need it dug two, two foot over, width and length, to work their forms. Probably have to go down and stake it out.
Stake it out. Probably go to the E C, make sure we're, should probably start that sooner than later. Even if it's not till next spring, at least they can look at, you know, how long they're gonna push.
Well, if we go with this guy, he's three weeks out.
But we have to contact the E C.
Yeah, maybe, right now, that's, now that works. Or how it was working.
Yeah.
So, nobody was working.
We can, I mean, whatever we approve, we can find that out tomorrow. We can contact them. I'm happy to call them tomorrow.
Because I know their jobs that weren't important, they weren't sending anybody.
Yeah, they're not at full staff.
Just know that from the people that came, from the bloopers and that.
All right, so that's these things, I thought, I thought we had talked about that, you didn't think of this.
I would get hold of them fine now.
We'll just clear it. They may say, it's fine.
May not be an issue.
It may not be an issue.
But I would definitely.
That's probably.
We talked about it, and I said, well, we should put salt screens at the very least.
Well, they are classifying boat launches as essential.
Yeah.
It's keeping people sanity.
It is.
Yeah.
Your social distancing on the water, so.
Yeah, because if they.
D E C is at the launches. They're staffing them.
If they decide that they're going to wait, they, they can't give approval till this, till next year, these prices are gonna change.
Well, they may, they may say, it's fine, it's good, we don't need to weigh in on it.
And they may even be able to do a virtual look at it.
So as much as that is digging that close, that's maybe an issue.
Well, we're, we're digging about, I think it's eight or ten feet from the river's edge, at least ten feet. Because that's twenty-foot gateway, and we have to stake it out, and we'll measure exactly where you are from the edge, but we're not digging the river's edge. We're digging back from it.
You're digging on land?
Mm-hmm. That's why we knew.
Yeah, this, this year's the time to do it. The water's.
I was just thinking that. What's that? The water's so low.
Yeah, I know. It's a good time to do it.
Well, you wanna go back to these, these quotes, and I don't, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if you'd like.
We can deal with this now. I don't know what the board feels, one's a little more than the other, but it's also a lot sooner.
Yeah, it's fifty.
I know, I know.
It's fifty dollars.
And it could be done much more quickly.
I make a motion to approve using Leduke's flat work in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
So second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petrich.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so, they did work.
I know, I know, I was very impressed with them.
Yeah, they, they did excellent work.
Well, look at their letterhead quote. Okay, did we, do we want to discuss how we're gonna pay for this?
Yes, we should discuss this. We were talking a little bit about it today.
My fit, my.
Okay, sorry, Northeastern Clinton is not silenced out of my phone. It must be a robo-tell. They have, they have priority. You guys should take it away.
Okay, so I suggested since it's the beginning of our new year, and as we go through to our abstract, we'll see we had to deplete a couple of funds, is that we take this money out of our fund balance to cover this.
And I agree.
Because we don't know what this year's gonna be. No, we don't.
I'm good with that.
Okay, all right. So we'll take it out of fund balance. Anything else, Tom?
Uh, yeah, that takes care of that. Mike, we'll, we'll talk to you tomorrow or something, figure out when we go down and stake it out some afternoon.
Yeah, or just stake it, we'll find out, and.
Stake it, take a picture, and then.
I'm thinking I might meet you down there, and then I can take some pictures, and then I can send them to whoever. Yeah.
Exactly.
I'll see what I got for contact for that.
Yeah.
Think I had a couple.
Okay.
It's like, I'm, I'm working the next few days at school, but in the afternoons, I'd be fine.
I'm working too, so you'll have to, fuck, do what you can.
Okay.
We're gonna have one crew flushing tomorrow, and I gotta cover some driveway to dig out to fix where we hit a water main break. But that's fine, I mean, it won't take that long to get, at least if I know where it's going, and you know the dimensions, then we can at least get a few stakes, get it painted, and we'll get a hold of.
So, either tomorrow, Wednesday is good for me.
It's fine, I'll, I'll make time for whenever you set it up.
Okay, whichever you think's better for you then.
Whatever.
Tomorrow, try tomorrow? Get it staked out, and we can contact the E C and.
I'd like to contact them soon.
Yeah, as long as you get it staked. Probably after I got a couple numbers for stuff like that.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll get some pictures, and I'll call the contacts.
Okay, so. And the only other thing I have is, I have a blood drive coming up on June twenty-ninth, and the EMS is co-sponsoring with me, and we'll be holding it at the EMS station number one again. So.
If you wanna share the announcement, or if you want me to share that, social media, just give me the info.
Yep, I will do that. I will share on my Facebook or something and do it out that way.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kim?
Other than looking with Tom at the quotes and meeting with some of the contractors, I'll be ever so happy to see this kayak launch done and people using it, but I really have nothing. Seeing as we probably won't be having a village festival this year or anything like that, there's not a whole lot going on other than needing to decide what streets are gonna be paved this year.
And of course, that's all up in the air. Because we don't know what they're gonna do about.
Exactly.
What do you think?
Kinda, life is still.
Very insurmountable.
On a, on a roller coaster, but I really have nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Amy?
Okay, so, I, I have a little bit, so you just have to bear with me and understanding everything. So we got the Stewart's grant, and I applied for a thousand dollars that would cover us to have a half a dozen volleyballs, the outdoor official, better quality, stand sturdy with, with net. So obviously, we're three hundred and fifty dollars off of that. Juanita, can you tell us, I mean, the total number of, how much money is available for the playground fund? Do you know? We don't know.
Not right now.
Okay. So, that, we're short the three fifty right off, off, up the gates. So it's either we, we change the quality of it, or we pony up the three fifty to fill that in. Okay. That being said, we could take a portion of that from the Charles R. Wood who gave us twenty-five hundred dollars. I did apply for just under thirty-nine hundred dollars, where they would pay for the fly-around, which is a cost of three thousand eighty-six sixty-three. And then they were paying for a portion of the four-seat balance around that the Healthy Neighbors grant did not cover. So we received the Healthy Neighbors grant from the Clinton County Health Department. That totally covers the stand-up seesaw, which was the number-one piece of equipment that we decided would be beneficial. The second seat was, the second piece was a four-seat balance around, okay? So if we take the nineteen eighty-six plus the three fifty from the Stewart's for the volleyball net, twelve thirteen, that's twenty-three thirty-six, which leaves us for six. That leaves us a hundred and sixty-four dollars from the money for Charles R. Wood, okay? We could use a hundred and sixty-four dollars towards whatever kind of foundation that we want, and then eliminate the fly-around piece of equipment, because their money would have covered the stand-up seesaw, the balance of that, which was just like three hundred or six hundred and eighty-five dollars, and then requested the fly-around to be of that portion. So, otherwise, if this makes any sense to all of you, we would have a balance of five hundred and eighty-six to finish the purchase of the fly-around, we would have a balance of six eighty-five to purchase the four-seat balance around, and then we have none of the funding for the foundation to go underneath as we stand right now. So my thought and my recommendation, because you all kinda seemed not so thrilled about the fly-around, kinda thought that was kinda like a really exciting one for more of the older kids. We can eliminate that altogether and then take the portion of the money in the Charles R. Wood paying for the piece of equipment, although it'd be a very small part. And really, how I wrote the grant was that they're gonna pay the balance of the four-seat sit-around, which is six hundred and eighty-five dollars, okay, and they gave us twenty-five hundred. Then use the other portion of that for the next piece of equipment. So we would need to use out of our funds five hundred and eighty-six sixty-three plus whatever we do with the volleyball, because I, I said that we have the funds for that in the playground grant.
Which we do.
Right.
Right.
That we would use that, and then the, we would use in-kind for the, the spreading of whatever we, we choose to purchase. Because they like having that balance of both donations, other grants, and I think that's why they jumped us this year all the way to twenty-five hundred, because we have that nice balance. So, that's what we need to think about. Now, we can cut down some of the number of volleyballs, and when they're gone, they're gone, but then it's useless if we don't have volleyballs for people to take out, unless people start to buy their own volleyball.
I think they will.
Because it's gonna be a decent. But we also have money set aside in equipment for youth. Oh, that's right, and that won't happen this summer, right? Right. Okay, that's excellent. So. I think we, I, I wanna say there's maybe four hundred. In the youth money? That's it? No, that's, that's just for, that's just the equipment. Okay. We do have money that we contractual and. Right. Yeah. So the four hundred would pay the, the balance on, about a hundred and eighty-six dollars on the third piece of equipment. So, I mean, we literally could do this, but, I mean, contact the insurance company and see if all three of these are kosher pieces of equipment. You want me to call them?
I, I don't mind, I don't mind doing it.
Okay.
I'll just have to, maybe you can email me those pictures.
Pictures?
Yeah.
Then we can send them to, um.
Yeah.
Okay. You know.
Tiffany?
Not Tiffany, the, the guy that came.
Oh, Henry.
Henry. Three hundred, there's three hundred there, but we also have money in contractual, and we do have money, personal, youth personal services, which, I don't know.
We don't know yet what's.
We don't know what's going on with.
But that might be a place that we can also not spend money.
Right. Correct. Which is needed, and that's my other thought.
Yeah.
Do we want to do this year with everything going down? So, that's kinda where we're at. I can kind of type that all up for you to look at. I would like to order those soon. Although, having this new equipment, is it just gonna tempt people to come to the playground? I mean, so we kinda have to see too, but we also have to spend the money, but I guess due to the situation, the understanding is that it would come, but then quotes are gonna go up as well. So, we, we have all of that to deal with, and then, of course, we have to install the equipment.
Okay, well, I will talk to the insurance company about those pieces.
Okay.
You're going to send me that.
Do those, excuse me, do those need, for installation, do those need to be set in concrete or anything? Do you know if it's required?
I would think so.
Yeah.
I would think so too, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think all playground equipment is set in concrete, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I would assume, especially something like that.
Mike, that stuff is in your daughter's.
Down there now. It's very low to the ground, but we have one at Morris, and it does.
Oh, is there one at Morris?
Just being able to go through it.
Okay.
Right.
So what's our plan of that? Are we, when you say in-kind, are we trying to do that through volunteer work, or?
I think it was, thinking it was.
Won't be this summer.
Maybe it could be volunteer work.
Maybe we can dig old, but.
Yeah.
But if we got a pile of equipment, there's, there's no way I can get everything done.
Right.
It just can't. All right, we're just starting with a full behind, like, once.
Yeah.
Maybe we can.
Maybe we order it, and we just.
Yeah, we do have a place to store it, in order.
Would we be able to store it?
The outside somewhere.
Maybe we could talk with Martin.
Might have to be palletized, probably.
See if, if, you know, we eventually need to get all, everything, something under all the equipment.
Yeah.
Maybe we can. Well, maybe they would be willing to. Donate some time to put it up, and then do the under. You know what I'm saying? We can.
We don't really have the money to do all of the chips under everything right now either.
Right.
But we can always ask if he can donate some time. Why do you need chips under that? You're not even gonna fall.
All, all, all equipment is supposed to have chips under it.
We'll get to it first.
New York State playground rules. Or actually, it's not New York State, it's federal.
I don't know. Maybe, maybe if you could find time to.
What'd you say?
Assuming they're gonna go in solid tube type things. But, not to find out if we do this, find out if the company has acquired.
Put chips, I'm sure, around it, if you were installing, you know, if we were trying to get, hopefully hasn't.
Well, why don't.
He'll tell you, the insurance guy will tell you, I'm sure, when you call him, he's gonna see it, you have to put this around it.
Right.
You know, it was, and.
I know.
It doesn't say in here at all.
I'm sure it gets selected in underneath because.
It's covered.
You'd never be able to.
Yeah, I'm assuming at least all tubes of concrete, at the least.
Well, we got the grant, I would say we still go ahead with the ordering. We get it, and we see if we can get volunteers, or somehow we'll just figure out how, at least we can put one piece in.
We gotta, we just don't know how much assembly and how it'll long, I mean, it's gonna take two, three weeks. I, I don't know, I don't know what's.
Well, I think we could probably get a group of people together to assemble it, but that's the biggest issue. Amy, when you do, if and when you do order, could you get instructions on assembly and?
Yeah, so I'm looking for here, I'm not.
The thing is, you, you really should, really should dig that out.
For, for a foundation underneath it.
Really should be dug out and planted, and chips, before you do any of the concrete,
because it's no good to do it after, it takes so much longer, that's the problem. If that would've been done originally, and then you set your, because you've got your heights, you've got your, you gotta have nine-inch, you know what I mean? That, you almost need to do it before you set your equipment, to get that prepped, correct? Do the concrete first and then put the, uh. No, because it's, no, then you're nine inches too high, you know what I mean? You gotta, you wanna get your ground prepped where it's gotta be. Oh, yeah, but you don't wanna put the chips in and then dig a hole. No, no, what I'm saying is get it, get it prepped for your, whatever it's gonna be around it, before you install the. Before, it just makes it so much easier than trying to dig around, you know, I don't know how they're gonna dig around that dome down there. How you gonna get inside that dome and dig that out to put chips inside there? You've got triangles this big, you can't, you'd have to ruin it.
We'll cross that right when it comes.
Time to do is before you put the equipment up. If you go back after, it's a lot harder to try to.
I know.
Because it changes.
Well, originally, they told us we couldn't put anything down, the last insurance company, we couldn't put anything down because it would be washed away with the flood.
I don't think it was insurance, that was the flood.
There was a flood zone, yeah. So, that's why it wasn't done and wasn't required with the other insurance company.
Well, still go ahead and send me those three, let me follow up with some questions, and I can do some of the research about the, uh, the concrete and the other parts too.
Requirements?
Requirements, and the only other thing is some grants that are being handed out are extending for a year because of other circumstances, people can't get them in at time, they've got reduced workforce. I don't know if any of those organizations would extend it out another year so we have more time to, to get it done. This summer's just gonna be tough.
Well, I could reach out to them and see if they're willing, I mean, Charles, they, they send the requirements with it. They only got the cover letter, so the second page is, there's a bunch of stuff with them. Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff with them that they, they wanna see the process and receipts and all that kinda stuff, so. Stewart's is less restrictive, less strict. And then, I don't know, in the Clinton County Health Department, but they certainly, of all people, understand what the heck is going on. The other option, if this is an absolute no-go for this year, I could see if they would be willing to hold that price for us. We have the funds to pay for the equipment and they leave it there, because we don't wanna get it and have it sick, because it's warranty on this too. And they have a warranty sitting on stuff that's sitting. So, I can call and chat with them, see if they're willing to do that as an option. And then we also have our stenciling, and are you, you the one that knows who's gonna do it? Or you know anyone who's stenciling it?
I think Nikki and I, we're gonna figure out a group of people to do that together.
Give us one person, definitely offer one.
Yeah, I think we can find some. We definitely need to get that done, because that was last year's grant, and we have everything for that. So, I don't wanna get piled up on, you know, we have the money, but didn't get to get that complete.
I mean, part of the hesitation, of course, is we don't wanna draw people to the playground.
Right.
So.
But that hopefully should be changing come July, that should be in that phase, but, you know, we don't, never know what, you know, what opening up is, is gonna do to us, that's true.
Same thing with the basketball, who, you know, I mean, we'd like to get that up, but we can't do that until, we don't want the twenty-five kids to come down and hang out together right now.
So, anyway, I'll make the calls and see if they're willing to do anything with us with the quotes, and hold it if we give them down payment on them, knowing that they will be delivered, you know, end of winter, so that we can move forward first thing in the frost is off the ground. But do we, we still wanna go ahead with the volleyball court, though?
I would say so.
But that's gonna draw people.
Yeah, but I don't think you're gonna get, I don't think you're gonna get as many as you're gonna get kids at the playground.
That's, uh, Andrew.
Thanks for all that work on those grants. I mean, it's really awesome. Really, really.
Nice job.
Yeah, really, really good.
Level by level.
Yeah. Thanks. Nikki?
Um, so, on May thirtieth, I held a virtual cooking class, we made dirt cups. And I was able to collect all the ingredients and then hand-deliver. So, there was seventeen or eighteen kids that joined.
Nice.
I couldn't see them because I was on video, but there were quite a few that were online and did the whole process with us as we did it, so. It was really fun, and they shared their pictures after, and the kids looked really happy. I know the cups we made were gone after. They were delicious. And I also started a virtual fun round, which we do our fun rounds every summer, because we can't get together to do that, we're gonna do it online. So, I have two dates each month through August, just like always. And I give them a week frame, timeframe to complete their run, and it's, I mean, do their best that they can for the quarter mile, half mile, or mile, depending on their age. And each, each time, there's a little theme to it or a challenge. So, this week is superhero. And within hours of me posting the information, I had one family who had already completed their run, and the one little girl's in her superhero outfit. So, yeah, so at this point.
So, you get that photos back and stuff?
Yeah, yeah. I just asked that they, you know, prove that they've done it, and I have twenty-three kids right now on my list who are participating, parents giving information. They initialled the post online, so I have their signature to say, you know, like we always, our forms that we have, so. It, it should be fun.
That's great.
I'm excited.
Yeah.
That's great.
That's great.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, and that's right on Facebook, off of our Kids Connected page, so. And that's it there now.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. It is really fun to see their photos.
Yeah, it is.
I love seeing the dirt cups and their smiling faces.
Yeah.
A report from the Click Treasure. Um, everyone has their May expense and revenue reports, which is our year-end. Um, we did have leftover in our water fund and our sewer fund, but our general fund was very close. Actually, it went the other way, up like thirty-five thousand. Um, but we did spend some of our funding out, so it's.
Are there any questions for Juanita on the detail of expenditures?
I didn't see them all.
Yeah, yeah.
How was it?
We can't, no, wait, we kinda realized at the last minute that we didn't have them, but.
So, what are you explaining about the general funds, you know, getting on board with that?
Well, our general funds, at the end of last year, we had two hundred and thirty-two thousand four ninety-eight. And the end of this year, we have a hundred ninety-seven six ninety. What did he say? What, this year?
Yeah.
One ninety-seven six ninety.
So, it's about thirty-five thousand, I think.
Thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
You heard the last year, didn't you?
Yeah, last, yeah, last year was two thirty-two.
Five years ago was four twenty-five.
But, but keep in mind also that, I mean, if you look back at June twenty sixteen, it looks like we have a lot, which we did, but we also have some in.
They probably don't have these.
No, they don't have that, but I can run that off for you later, so you've got it, it's really interesting. But we also have some in reserve that was moved out of that, that hundred and twenty thousand, for example, that was, that we'll be using for the snowplow, that was moved out of that large amount that we had in June twenty sixteen. Do you want, do you want someone to make a copy of these right now, would you like to see that?
Probably.
Do you wanna do all three?
Oh, yeah, let me get you the other two, I've got, I've got them here.
Actually, I did, no. So, I went back five years to two thousand sixteen.
I wanted to come.
And, and I wrote, for each fund, I put how much.
You have one copy too.
But one time.
How much we started out with, and then how much we're, where we are at this point. Each year shows how it's either went down or come up in our reserve funds.
I mean, obviously, we're concerned about our fund balance, which way it's going, so I asked Juanita to just give me the last four or five years, so we can see the pattern.
So, are we able to contribute more to our reserve fund?
Well, I think, I know that we've talked a little bit about water, and that's okay, but the general fund is the one that I'm really concerned about, because that's gonna be affected by our revenues this year, our lack of revenues.
Plus, we're also taking a hundred and twenty thousand out of it.
And we're taking the one twenty out for the snowplow, which was earmarked anyway, but we are taking that this year. So, this year, I would, I don't think we'd be putting anything in a reserve fund in general this year.
Okay.
Water, we can't, no.
Water, we need to.
Water, I was going to recommend that, yeah.
Well, we're using part of what we put into reserve for equipment anyways for a truck, so.
Right, right, yeah. I'll wait till you have those copies.
And speaking of interest, it's point zero one.
Oh, wow, gonna get rich.
Those interest for?
Unsavings. So, have you guys sent interest on the, your savings, can you also?
Oh, my gosh.
Just, okay, just. Are we gonna do this under the business power group?
What's that?
The, um, override.
Yeah, well, we can do that, we can do that, talking about the financial part, right? Just do that, yeah. Let's see, those are mine.
Am I passing through the other one, or?
No, it's, uh, each.
All of the time.
Water, yeah, very much, yeah. Yeah, but I think the one that we really have to focus on right now is general. I mean, we, we need to talk about water, but generally, you can see the change from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. And then we've had the same three reserve accounts, eight, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. I don't know if you, if you have questions, the, you know, the reason I did this is I, I just think this is going to be a year where we may, we don't know exactly where we stand in terms of revenues. It might be a year when we have to pull more out. And I just wanted everyone to know where we stand, the history, how we've been for the past five years, and then projecting forward, I mean, we really should have a five-year plan. It's kinda hard to do this year because we really don't know what's going to happen. But I do think, looking forward, we should, we should have some kinda plan, at least a five-year plan.
So, on these re- reserve amounts, they're just carried over, or those?
Correct, if we don't use them, they just carry over because they're earmarked.
Right, so we haven't, uh, we added that here. We must've used some, then it carried from there, from, like, I'm looking at water, for example, from June eighteen to present, we're carrying a hundred and ninety thousand.
Okay, that one there, we discussed today.
We just looked that one up today, I'll let Juanita explain it.
Okay, so, in, in two thousand seventeen, we had a hundred thousand dollars in repairs. So, in June of two thousand eighteen, we put forty thousand in there for the generator. And then, um, when we did ashline drive for the repairs, when we did the water project, we took thirty thousand dollars and change out of that fund, so that left it with a hundred and nine.
Okay.
So, we still have that hundred and nine in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I know that we've talked about putting a little more in, in terms of those filters. I think Mike said those are twenty-seven thousand something.
Something like that, I go, filters and, you know, I was thinking about what, what, a lot of your meters.
Okay.
Well, we discussed twenty.
We discussed twenty. We, yeah, Juanita and I thought that maybe if we could put another twenty into reserves on the water, that it.
We could make a motion to do that. We could make a motion to do that.
Yeah, we could make a motion to do that. Does anyone wanna make a motion, we can take care of this financial part right now, if you want.
And as far as that reserve account, that can only be used for parts and repairs, can any of that be used for, for, you know, future projects, things like that?
For what?
Future projects in regards to water lines, or?
That repair fund can be used.
It can, right?
Yeah.
So, can we afford to put more than that in there? Can I go back to my water over here?
I, I don't know that I would be comfortable doing that.
We could.
I mean.
It's only gonna, it's gonna bring it down, but look at what, look at what it was last year, and look at what it was in January two thousand sixteen. I mean, it hasn't really changed a real lot, except when we did ashline drive and then it went back up.
But what is the, but what is the advantage of putting it in a reserve when we can pull it from fund balance anyway?
That's true, yeah, that's, we can, we can do that too.
I mean, a reserve really ties it, so if we have some reason other than a repair.
You can't touch that money.
We can't touch that money.
And we started to do the reserves because our fund balances were getting so big.
Right.
Well, that ended earmarked, because then the board came in and they don't get used for other things.
Oh, okay.
They do get earmarked.
Yeah.
That's the, that's really the biggest advantage to them, is it, it sets that money aside and doesn't get, you know, the board changes, they don't get used in software the year.
You know, we do have a, a study in prog, in progress for waterline replacement. We don't know yet what that's going to result in.
That money could be used for that.
But that money could be, but so could fund balance. It doesn't have to be in reserve.
Yeah.
Can we pipe that up by twenty percent this year?
Yeah. Does, does the board want to put another twenty aside, at least towards those filters?
Yeah.
Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to, to add twenty thousand dollars to the reserve fund for repairs in the water.
No, we're gonna do, we're gonna do an F eight forty-five, which is gonna be inventory.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I wrote that down.
What's that mean?
It's, it's a, it's a separate reserve account for inventory. I looked it up today.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom, I shouldn't have explained that. So, rather than repairs, we were gonna, we were gonna put it in inventory, so.
So, it's specifically used for inventory. Which would, which would cover those filters.
And other inventory, if there was something else that we needed, but.
Such as meters.
Such as meters.
Okay.
Is there a second on that? Second, other discussion? So, it would be twenty thousand dollars from the fund balance into F eight forty-five.
Uh, is there a second? Uh, charge, is there a certain charge?
Reserves for inventory. Questions?
So, what is the advantage of doing this, other than earmarking, and I get it, but if we need it, and we can still pull it from fund balance? I just, explain to me what the perk here would be, when we know we're gonna be tight on everything this year, and then that kinda restrains us.
I think it's almost like calling it a savings account for these filters that we're worried about needing, or meters, or it's just saying, we know, we have a plan that we're gonna have to replace some of this, and this is our account for that.
And that's all it is, is setting aside and earmarking it again, so it, it does pull your fund balance down, which is, you know, a good thing, in this case, the water's pretty healthy.
Asking a question.
Oh, no, it's a, it's a good point.
So, did we just wanna do twenty, or do you wanna do forty?
I'd rather do twenty.
Okay. I'm just.
What do this, these filters cost, and the meters, and, and in average?
Meters are-
Put it this way, how long into the future are you gonna need meters? Is it five years?
Well, we're already, no, they're, uh, well, it depends, some are ten years, some are twenty years, but we're already, uh, some of these meters are already five years, they're already probably a quarter of the way.
Four or five years.
Okay, I'm just thinking, you know, if we, if we do the twenty-
The ten, so the number's, the number's five, within five to six years, we're replacing some of them.
Twenty to five years.
Some big ones.
But what do they cost, each meter? I know it's gonna change, just given the ballpark, what are we talking about?
A house meter is a hundred fifty bucks a piece for a house. Big meters are more than that, it's, those you can change registers on, but they're like a eight thousand dollar meter, so probably got four or five hundred bucks for changing the registers on. Got, what, six hundred probably, or somewhere around there, I mean, it's quite a few. The filters, I don't know what it was.
Twenty seven five is what you said before.
Twenty seven five, and that would be, um-
And that's a shared expense for the town.
Shared expense, yes.
So, meters would be two.
So, we would be-
Any of them are in town.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if we put money away now for them, or-
Yeah, they are putting money away.
Yeah, they are, they are. They're setting money aside for, it's in their budget anyways, for the filters as well. Their meters, they would be responsible for entirety, but the filters would be forty percent of the cost.
And how often do you need to replace the filters?
I have no idea yet, I haven't been here to flush system in the last year.
And how many filters are there? Is there one in every?
One set. Yeah, there's, no, there's like three in each tube, there's, that's why I cost to replace all of them.
Okay.
Is it nine?
Okay.
There's, I think it's three by twenty-four, is it?
Okay.
Or twenty-seven, I don't remember. Three sections, I think there's three tubes per, they're long.
Well, there's three filters in each one of those tubes?
I think it's three or four.
Okay. Any-
Nine tubes.
So, we have a motion on the floor to put in twenty thousand.
We have a second.
Can we have a second? Is there any other discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Trustee Malinsky.
Hi.
Trustee Chombley.
Hi.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Hi, thank you. Okay, the warrant?
Oh, we're gonna discuss this first?
Oh, I don't know what the order is, I-
Well, I don't know, I don't know if we want to do this, or do this under new business, because I have nothing, but we'll do, okay.
Okay, we'll wait, let's, let's, uh, let's take care of the warrant.
Okay, we have additional invoices to the warrant of two thousand one hundred and ninety thirty-four, for a total warrant of sixteen thousand eight sixty-nine thirty-eight.
Make a motion to pay the warrant with the additional invoices for a total of sixteen thousand eight sixty-nine thirty-eight.
Is there a second? Discussion, questions?
Trustee Malinsky.
Hi.
Trustee Chombley.
Hi.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Hi.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Hi. Okay. Report from the superintendent.
In the past few weeks here, the meters, meters were, uh, red, are monthly bleeding. We had quite a few high ones this time, we had a log went around, found leaks, a lot of our toilets. Uh, we're currently working on hydro flushing, um, it'll be at least another week or more before we get that complete. We had, uh, one water main leak that we repaired today in South Street. I gotta clean up there, put some culverts and stuff in tomorrow. Uh, we're still in the process of cleaning, um, ditches, culverts, replacing some that need to be replaced, uh, cutting shoulders. We're gonna be, uh, continuing on that to try to get what we can ready for come asphalt season, as long as they can do our asphalt still. I got a few roads, I got stones coming out of them, I gotta dig them, I can think of three of them right now, I got stones pushing through, and then dig out. And then, as time allows, we still have sidewalks, the curbing, um, I got a water main to put in across the street, cut the road out, and put in, um, still got a little bike path to ditch. The bridge, all that stone underneath, that still all has to be done, um, and I don't know when, but when we get to it, I guess we get to it. It has been, uh, has been busy. Uh, the other thing is, um, dumping is no longer allowed on Elm Street. The signs were removed, um, no dumping signs were put up, uh, spring pickup was done in May, I see people still piling brush all over on the side of the road. Um, it's, seems to be the last few years, it's all summer we pick up. But we had some people that dumped stuff in there, the shinto, uh, lumber, fencing material with nails, screws, so the dump yards closed. I don't even know, right now, it's getting pretty full, I don't know, um, we don't really have any other lane to put material, I don't even know if we're gonna do a fall pickup. I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure what's gonna happen there, but the dump yard is closed. I still have a few people that, uh, there is cameras there, still have a few people that go and operate by the signs and dump, um, you can't do it. A few people I stopped, I looked at the camera, I went, saw them, can't do it. If they continue to do it, then we'll take a different route, but, um, the, the dump yard's closed, there's no signs there, it's a village-owned property, and you can't dump there, so. Some people are mad, some people understand, it's, it's like babysitting, somebody's gotta stay there. All that material that goes in there, I have to go back and look at the camera and see how many yards or tons of material, and I have to make a report monthly, for end of the year for DEC, and how much material, and it's, it's just too hard to babysit. So, I figured it was easier to close out, close it than it is to, um, to, to keep having to go through this. Right now, I gotta, my back tire keeps going down, I think we hit a nail in there, pushing, pushing stuff up because of lumber with nails, so, uh, dump yard's closed.
Do we need to, uh, I know it's about time to talk about fencing, but maybe fence it in, so we can keep people from adding to it, and getting in there, regardless of what sign it is?
Some people would just throw right over a fence.
Well, is, is there any reason why we can't have a sign that says violators will be prosecuted?
Yeah, but it doesn't, but it doesn't, yeah, but it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't stop them from dumping, and then Mike having to chalk them down, spend hours looking at cameras.
And ticketed?
Somebody still has to pull it. We gotta send that, still, we gotta send that, the walk-up that had no dumping sign and dump, I mean, we got-
I don't know, it, it just seems to me that if a state trooper shows up at your house with a ticket or something like that, that it might deter someone from-
If they had a six-foot chainlet fence, I'd move the one from the others and bring it over.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna talk about that.
I mean, eventually, it's probably will be fenced, I'd like to use it for a yard, for, oh, sorry, I mean, whatever.
Well, if we, if we, if we're able to, let's just sort this out for discussion, if you don't mind, if we're able to fence it off where people are not gonna violate, do we have enough room to at least continue the fall and spring pickup only? Under our control, not letting people go in there on their own?
We don't have a lot of room left.
Okay, that's my question.
Problem is with no, you know, when the gate is there, I had to put rocks all along the road to the neighbor's property, because they'd drive around the side and dump it on the grass. It's, it's too bad, because it's continuous.
I know, that's why I think it's gonna be fenced.
I found a bunch from Rogers Point coming in, and I had them come get their stuff, you either come get it, or the sheriff will come get you. So, they had to come get it, and they took all their stuff out, just hauling in from Point of Rush, uh, just, people were telling them, oh, yeah, they wanna fill that up, they can't. And the lumber is what really gets me, every time I get nails, this isn't the first time, um, and I, I, I'm, I know the lumber that just came in, um, I know where it came from, but, uh, it is what it is, and it's, it's a village resident, and-
They'd still come and get it, if it had the signs up, then they need to come and get it.
Well, the, the signs are, after that is when we pulled the dump yard sign down, we put no dumping signs, and we had put a closed sign, of course, it keeps falling over the closed sign, but-
But we've never been allowed to dump lumber, have them come and get it.
You're right, if you can know who it is.
It doesn't matter who it is.
Yeah, does it? Sure it does, when they're behind, when they go behind a dirt pile and hide, they come in with a tarp over it, and you can't actually see, and you go there after and you find it, there's been nobody else there, but how do you prove it? You can't, so.
We have the cameras.
Yeah, but the, the pile is there.
Can't see it. They got their tarp, load cover going in, they go back in the back, they throw it off, you can't see them actually unloading it, you don't know what they have, you go there after, and you know it, it's there, and you know where it came from, but you can't actually prove it, so.
Well, so, I'm gonna say publicly, shame on you, whoever the heck is doing this, because you cannot take anything to the dump, we're asking our residents to maintain their property, to make it look good, and there's nowhere to do it. So, our property value is gonna plummet in a town that is staggeringly horrible property value in the first place, and it makes me very angry. I'm sorry, shame on every last one of you who has violated for us villagers who are paying for that. It, it's unacceptable. I understand, but it is unacceptable, shame on them.
And this was village, this was a village, really, isn't it? I mean, and I don't, and I know that's right in front, but, uh, so, I don't-
I don't care if it's a village resident. There's rules for a reason.
I don't know what the next step, I don't know if the town has a spot, I don't know, but as of right now, we don't have any other-
There's no option, the dump isn't taking it, n- nobody's taking it, it's, it's, it's a shame.
So, I don't know.
It is literally a shame, and I don't care that it's a village, it's shame on them.
And I think the same thing happened to an municipality, because abuse, it's too bad.
Right. Yeah, they put theirs down, right.
I don't, having it closed is, is one thing, but then controlling it's the other, that's a problem. How are you gonna close it off without fencing it? And I know you, I know there will be a few that'll throw a bag of stuff over, but it would really stop the loads of lumber going in.
Well, that's the, that's happened multiple times, and that's just, that last little lumber, that was it, that, that's what, I said, I can't do this anymore. I brought, you know, I picket fencing, I'm bringing it up here and throwing it in our dumpster, but it's constant garbage. People hide it under their leaves, you got soda bottles, you got whatever garbage you pick up on their house, road, that all gets dumped in there, doesn't matter, coffee cups, well, throw that out too, I mean, it's constant, you know? The thing is with that, if the DEC goes and there's garbage, or even bags, I don't even think they warn us, they just, they'll send us a ticket, we've been pretty lucky. We, and we do monitor it, try to keep up, to make sure there's no garbage there, um, but, and it is getting full. I had to, for a while, I had to cone it, because they keep putting it on one side, and I can't put any more there, we gotta bank, you know, it's-
Oh, we're gonna waste water.
Yeah, I can't put any more there, I gotta taper that, the bags are very few high.
So, villager who went in and dumped this stuff and went behind the mound, why can't we place a call to this villager and say, why did you have to go behind the mound to dump your stuff?
I mean, you can't really accuse, especially, you can't really accuse without knowing, without seeing it, and I couldn't see it, but I know I went there after, and it was there, and that was-
But you see on camera them going behind.
Yeah, that's where they're all going, I mean, they're all going behind, because they had that pile, topsoil pile, we've been working on from, so I moved the pile back, so I can see past now.
They're all going behind the nails, yeah.
It just happens to you.
But it's not just, that was just the final, it's, it's, that, that happens all the time.
I know, I get it, but, you know, and then we paid for the, the cameras to be there, and now, you know, it's just, it's just a shame, that's all, okay, except for peace.
And I think it, and I think the only one we're gonna do.
We've been doing it for so long, we just figured, on the-
Put a car to it, it's, I should put it back, I don't know how you else are gonna do it.
I don't know, have too many been dumping now that, that the word's out?
Not this week.
Because we've been having violators for years.
The people that I've been telling-
Just bringing the wrong stuff, like, you know, concrete, toys.
Oh, I know. I don't know if you talked to the one over here, or not.
I know, but-
I have not.
You know, you probably should, but I told the other one that I saw, it's it, no more, you walk right by the signs. One of them did, but he had called here, he had provision, and he didn't do it to the following week, he couldn't get the lock open, couldn't get it open, because they changed it, domination, so he brought his stuff, but he had called, so I can't really tell him. He, it just happened when he called, it was like, two days later is when I closed it.
Right. Well, the past few times that we've gone, it's been wide open.
Well, not in the last week or so.
Not in last week, no.
We weren't leaving it open on the weekends, people cleaning, you know, to make it.
Two weeks ago, the last time. Right, it was very convenient.
It was, ended up being too convenient, unfortunately, it's too hard to babysit, you know, it's, it's not like the dump, where you got somebody at the gate, and you can see how much material, or whatever, coming in, it's just, it's hard, it's hard, so.
But then you defend, I don't know how to control it. And then you would have control, if you wanna do a fall pickup, then you have control of what you're bringing in there.
I mean, we're still gonna use it for ourselves, like, for instance, our water break today, that slot, you know, we're still gonna use it for, for ourselves. Um, we got a topsoil, we got common fill there, we use, we can use, as far as in and out, but, um, it's not open to the public anymore.
Well, just want everybody to, just want everybody to know, and, I mean-
We'll have to, we'll, we'll be- Evaluate how it's going, see how many offenders there are in the next few weeks, talk about it next month, see if we have to do a fence, maybe people respect it, who knows?
The first week or so, they were, people were putting stuff, but I've been keeping an eye, the stuff that was there, I didn't move, um, because it was someone's gonna make them come get it.
Well, I'm happy to, to give a couple hours to review tapes every month, if I can, you know, have access to it, uh, when I have the time to come in and sit, I'm happy to do that. But it's gotta just be so I can flex to get in when I have the time, so, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do that, because this is just, you know, it was a great little perk that we have for people, and I understand we're full now, so it's kind of obsolete, but the violators, we need to, to prosecute, you know, that, you just need to.
Well, Mike did get many to come back and remove, tons and tons and tons of stuff.
Good.
People from other towns, most of the time it was other towns, but.
All of them.
It's crazy.
Yeah, all of them, yeah.
Yeah, two weeks ago, I had to stump sides of the inside of this thing, just dump right in the, right in the center, you know, it was carried up from Moore Street on a backhoe, I don't know where it came from, dump it right in the middle of the, all right, I got rid of it. Then, it just, I don't know, it adds up, just keeps compiling.
It does, and it's very frustrating, and it just, it really wears you down.
Sometimes it seems like the same ones too, unfortunately.
Wears you down.
Well, just like the ones that would lead you to six truckloads of brush on the side of the road at pickup time.
Yes, we still get that, but we take one in the rest days.
Right, I know, crazy, I know, you're sorry.
I don't know, what we're gonna do for an alternative, though?
Well, you know, let's, let's think about it this month, maybe discuss the topic in July, see if we can think of maybe some different possibilities.
I mean, even brush, if you pick brush, you gotta replace the stockpile, and if you stockpile, it's, it's, it's not fun to chip, because it's, it's all tangled, you know? We don't have a chipper, we'd have to rent a chipper or get a chipper, um, like I say, I don't know if the town has a spot, I don't know.
I'm gonna, I am going to, I'm going to call.
You can ask me when you go to your meetings, see what they say.
I could check with Ellen.
Oh, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay. See if there's a, a shared service we can do and find its location.
Because even if it was, even if brush, if they have a pit or something, in, in a town site, it could probably have controlled burn for brush. I don't know, you know, with the fire department, the pilot, I think Rogers Point used to do that, but it's in the village, and they can't do that anymore, but, um, the problem is not that, is everybody brings junk with it, that's the problem.
And they burn garbage.
Yeah, you've got a, they don't care, because it's out of their hair.
I know.
That's the, if they would, if they were, I mean, there's a lot of people that are-
I think we need more control on it.
Grass, it's stuff they're supposed to bring, and then there's some that just bring anything they get away with, and that's the-
It's almost like it should have been fully closed off and opened certain gates, it's the only time you can go to try to control it and keep an eye on it.
Well, it was good for a little while, we had it here, and we had them where they had to get the, well, we tried with a key, that didn't work, because the people would take the key, and they'd go to their camp in Point of Fair, and people are looking for the key, and they don't have it, well, I'm gonna come back later. So, we went to a combination lock, but then one gives it to the other, and it's, comes to the same, so I had to keep changing it. And then you, you tell people they can dump, you know, they have stuff here, and then they're going to all their relatives, or their commercial, and they're going to this town, that town, and they're dumping in there, because it's figured it's a free ride now, and they, that's their, it makes it hard.
So, I mean, if, if- If we find that location, I think it has to be very controlled.
I don't see any possibilities in the village.
No, I don't. If we find that location, when we're trying, it's gonna have to be controlled, they'll be in the same boat.
I'll talk to, I'll give Alan a call. Yeah. And I'll talk to that woman also.
Just let her know no more, and I was gonna bring it back, just like the other, I was gonna bring back and put it in the front lawn, but she would be here before I came back.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, no, the only thing I was, the only other thing I have is I have three quotes for, um- Uh, no, the only thing I was, the only other thing I have is I have three quotes for, um, generator, uh, ins- installed, let's say installed. Other than we gotta do, uh, we gotta build it up there, we gotta put the cement pad and set the, set the generator, but all three of the quotes are, uh, for the generator and wiring and labor. Um, and it's like going up every day, uh, copper wires.
Yeah, I know, I heard it's gone.
Like a week was it, went up for the, one quote went up like twelve hundred dollars in a week.
Yeah, I heard that, dude.
Copper is just taken off and I had a quote before I gave you was a few, was a few thousand less than this, but, um. The more I looked into this generator, I know it runs at eighty percent, but this wire here will handle, there there's a six hundred amp breaker on that generator. And you don't wanna, you shouldn't size a wire smaller than a breaker, so this here is like six something, this will give you more than, because the other quotes that I had before was. Uh, wire was smaller, it would, it would take care of the generator, but the wire could melt before the breaker trips, so it's not really to, so we wanted to make sure if you're gonna put it in, you're gonna put wire big enough. So I did get three quotes, the quote number one, um, that's the one I had from like last year, um, we requoted it, but that's one I had from before. Um, and that is buying generator, of course, he buys them direct, uh, so we get the generator from him and then the labor's on there, which shows you your subtotal. And then, um, you can, it comes with a one-year warranty, you can do a five-year, a two-year or a five-year, so I did put that on there. You can see where it says subtotal, that's the price, and then if you did a two-year warranty, just to the right of that, and if you did the five-year warranty, it's the one that's, the bigger one that's highlighted. The next two is we buy the generator direct from the same company the first guy buys from, and that's the price of the generator, the top line, generator direct. And then the second, it says labor, uh, that's actually wiring and, uh, labor and material to put it in. Um, and the same thing with the third quote, I had him come and give you a price on the, on electrical and labor.
So on, on the, all three of these quotes, the same contractor doing the electrical?
No.
And labor, or they all different?
First guy, he's selling his gen- generator and has his own electrician.
Okay.
The second, third quote, we buy the generator at that top price and then the, the bottom price is what the electricians would charge.
Are they different?
Be two separate, yep.
And different electricians and?
Different electricians, but the generator made from the same company.
Okay.
And I do have, I just put on that paper to try to make it easier, I do have, um, the quotes.
The individual?
Yeah, I just didn't wanna put up any names in case it didn't be decided, we didn't say, uh, you know what I mean?
So we already approved a certain amount, right?
Forty-five thousand each time?
Yep, forty-five. Um, forty-five thousand four thirty-two, up to forty-five thousand four thirty-two.
That was originally, um.
So why don't you just amend the quote from April sixth to this one?
Yeah. Right.
Can you amend from that far back versus, um, putting in for the increase?
Or should we just approve the additional?
Just do, approve the additional expense of two thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. That was April sixth, this, this year, April sixth, this year.
You only did this one question? Yeah, ooh, you're good.
I did too.
Wow. Yeah, so maybe it is easier to add the additional, I'm not missing, I think it's better.
We have an extra, we have a forty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so based off that, Amy, you're, you're with me, we're gonna go to quote number two.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to approve additional two thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars, uh, in order to go to quote two. Twenty-two forty-eight.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? No?
No, so that would take care of it, Mike?
Yeah, that would, that would, that should take care of it.
Yeah, that should take care of it, um, and I know it delete time is, it's gonna be a while.
Alright.
Um, and I really don't wanna, until we get it here, until I'm late, I'll go ahead, I'll let you.
It's just really, they might wanna rethink that, that gives you this one-year warranty, by the way.
Well, uh, yeah.
The first one, you mean?
No, that, what we just, what we just did.
Oh, wait, what did you? Oh, you, you took it off of the forty-seven six eight? Or the forty, I mean, the forty-eight one fifty-five?
Twenty fifty-five.
No. Yeah, I did, and I took it off the forty, seven, six, eight, my apologies.
Forty-seven, six, eight.
Oh, I think for only eight seventy-five, you want the five-year.
I did, I did too.
Yes, definitely, yes, you.
I did too.
My apologies.
Same here, so I need to change the amount, like, I'm gonna, uh.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, I guess I should have done my own. So do you have three thousand one or twenty-three?
Yep, three thousand one twenty-three.
Okay, can you, can you amend that, Tom?
Yep, I changed my, uh, my motion to approve three thousand one hundred and twenty-three additional dollars to go towards quote number two.
What's the five-year warranty?
You made it nice and big too.
I know, I.
And I even said, yeah, definitely five-year versus a two, that's crazy.
I know.
And then I subtract the other one.
I do the same thing, I'll feel better.
I'm glad I don't, I feel much better.
And there was a second on that, correct?
Yeah, it was a second.
Okay.
I no longer feel bad for my brain function. Roll call.
I'm still getting.
Trusty Malinsky, I, trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Merrick Patrick.
Aye. Is that it, Mike?
Sorry about that, Mike.
No, it's okay, I was, I was just saying that I should get the, the generator here, then to get our pad set, to make sure everything's, you know. Culture, where where it's gotten it.
Yeah.
Because we got, we gotta build it up for blocks, build it up and then pour a concrete pad, so, and then we're not gonna unhook this one and we're gonna wait, once we get it here, then you can.
Using the same, using the same fuel tank?
Uh, it'll be there, but it's got fuel tanks built on it.
Oh, so.
So, no, but probably should use it for, you can transfer out of it, because it's gonna have a twenty-four hour. It'll run twenty-four hours at full load, so that tank is still there, we can always use it to transfer into it, from one to the other, if we, you have a backup.
Correspondents?
Um, correspondence from Clinton County Treasury First Quarter Sales Tax, correspondence from Champaign Fire Department regarding decision on the plant station. Correspondence Francis Tate regarding unsafe structure, correspondence to Neil Poole regarding removal of mobile home. And correspondence with Charles Wood Foundation regarding playground grant.
Juanita, where did we stand to first quarter last year versus this year?
That quarter?
Yeah.
We actually got, uh, last year, we got three, four thousand.
Really? So we were up, that's a lot.
But that's, that was, that was January, February, yeah, that was the first three, so this next one will be the.
But we did lose March, so this is pretty, that's a pretty good start to the year.
Yeah.
This has been down since Saint Patty's before, before that, so.
March is March is my quarter.
Yeah.
But this is the next quarter sales tax is our big sales tax.
It's the next quarter will be like.
I'm gonna discuss that.
Yeah, I'll discuss that in just a minute.
Okay.
Um, so under, under new business, um. I guess this can come under new business, I just wanted to basically tell you a little bit more about this fiscal picture. You know, we budgeted about a hundred ninety thousand from our sales tax for revenue. Um, and as Amy just brought up, clearly thirty-eight thousand for that first quarter was pretty good. Um, I know that the numbers from April, um, in the state are down twenty-one percent. Uh, and that's only April, so the big check that we get for sales tax is the July payment, which would be, um, April, May and June. The pandemic. Last year, we got seventy-one thousand for that. So if we're down twenty, if we stay down only twenty-one percent, that means that we are down fifteen thousand. Mike, I've heard estimate, estimations in the county that we're gonna be down between twenty and seventy-five percent.
That's a big range.
Yeah, it's coming, you know, there, there, it depends on who you talk to, uh, let's hope it comes in twenty. Then it's only fifteen. Um, I think, just as an estimate, my guess is that we're going to be down about forty thousand in, in the year.
You're talking about?
I'm talking about the quarter for the July quarter, with seventy-one thousand, so twenty percent of that's only fifteen.
Order, okay, okay.
Okay.
Um, but I think over the year, I think our shortfall is going to be around forty. So Juanita and I did sit down and we did go over the budget and, um, there are a few things that we can see that we can just not spend the money, or we can spend part of it. I'm just gonna throw them out so you know what we're thinking right now. The nightcom schooling is twenty-five hundred. Engineering, we've got two thousand. The contingency, we've got three thousand. The temp employee, we put in five thousand. We know there will be a reduction in the youth, uh, recreation, but we don't know how much yet, because we don't know what will happen in this, in the fall. But there's no swimming program, so that will save something. Um, the fence, we pay thirteen hundred dollars a year for that fence around that property downtown. That is basically becoming a, a jungle, I walked around it today, the trees are gigantic. You can't, there's, there's no way you're gonna break in, all the windows and all the doors are sealed shut, uh, that bill comes due in December. I don't see why we would continue to pay that money for that fence around that building. And maybe that fence could be used somewhere else, but that, that may be, that may be some, a way we can, we can save that. And as I said in my report, I'm not gonna take a salary, um, so that adds up to over twenty-five thousand right there. That's a good start.
What was the three thousand, the third thing, you said nightcom engineering?
Uh, contingency.
Contingency, that's right.
What's with your bolts, Janet, you got your bolts?
Well, that came in, that come, no, that comes under, that comes under, that comes under the culture, oh, the culture recreation's forty-five hundred, maybe I didn't mention that.
Trees, Christmas decorations.
You didn't?
Okay, culture recreation's forty-five.
So I can't. Not getting long bolts this summer.
No, I canceled that, they were totally understanding. Um, we, we bought one tree because one died at the playground and Clark went and bought it and removed the old tree and planted the other tree, so it's in.
Village Fest.
Village Fest will probably not happen. Possibly a, a, maybe a fall fest of some sort, but I don't think we need, we have a lot of money in the Village Fest, although we just had to pay for the playground stuff and that came out of.
We took it out of, we depleted the parks.
Yep.
And we almost depleted, depleted the community beautification fund.
Yeah, to pay for the chips at the.
Oh, for the, or.
But even, even those come up to over twenty-five thousand. Um, and then, you know, Mike and I have talked about different ways that we might be able to save some money here.
I mean, it's there, but it's not that you have to use it, if something does come up, at least.
Yeah.
You have something to lean back.
Yeah. So my goal really is to just try to reduce spending overall categories that we're not, there'll just be some that we just won't use, we won't go to school this fall. Probably not gonna happen anyway. We're not gonna get a temp employee, that's five thousand.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think, I think we can do it, we're just gonna have to cinch up.
When is that fencing, uh, timeout?
That's December.
December.
Oh.
And it's thirteen, thirteen oh three.
You go one day over, you pay for the year.
Yeah, I know, so we just gonna have to.
Oh, I know, so we gotta remember that.
When they remove it?
No, uh.
We have to take it down and they'll take it away.
Oh, well, because after we'll get it. It was quite, it was quite a load on the one time.
It's all entangled and binds right now.
Oh, my gosh, I couldn't believe it.
She has to wait for it to die off.
Well, burn it off for a little. Kidding.
I mean, I feel if we use it for our own purpose and have to pay that, that's one thing, but right now, it's.
Well, it is something to consider, actually, if you have to move it, we could move it over there temporarily to try to stop the influx if it continues on. We, we'd pay for it anyways.
We'll have to evaluate what happens then.
That's an idea that people realize throughout the summer, it's done.
Right. I mean, if we own it, it'd just be the labor to move it over there.
Why not?
All it is is square bases and they just set on.
Yeah, but at least it closes it off and.
So what happens with that, if something happens with that building, that's not on us?
Uh, we don't own it.
No.
He owns it.
He still owns it, it just doesn't have.
Or the county or somebody.
No, he owns it, he owns it, he owns it, we can't collect taxes and we can't collect for the fence. So who got, um, the money for zombie property these this year, you know, for the, the problem?
The land bank is not formalized yet, and this situation has just kinda made it stall.
Oh, it isn't.
I think it will move forward in a year, but I, I did talk to the treasurer and she said, you know, they're still, hopefully it, it will be granted to Clinton County, but right now.
And if she moves out of that position, is the new person gonna continue?
I think the county's behind it, I do think the, the legislature is behind it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But in regards to, you just posed a question, or somebody did, what happens for liabilities if somebody gets hurt? I mean, we could just put something on the sidewalk to, a couple jersey barriers to make sure people stay four feet away from it for casual.
You know, it's not the only abandoned building down there.
Oh, I know.
And, uh, I, I don't, I just don't see it any worse than some of the others.
There's a lot of those, right?
Well, yeah, I, I was just thinking that to protect us is just a couple jersey barriers or.
Actually, that's a state road.
Where people have to walk around instead of right here in the building. Just a thought, not expensive.
Yeah, I, I don't know, yeah.
Inside the concrete. It's cheaper in the fence.
Yeah. Um, so that's all I wanna say about that right now, uh, I'll just keep you posted as I, as we learn more. Um, we do need to go into executive session.
Um, to, once, discuss this first, okay.
Oh, we wanna do that first, yeah, do that first.
Okay, first of all, um, when we did our budget, um, I guess I should have did a little bit more calculations. Anyway, we ended up, we're over our tax cap. So we are over the tax levy by two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Um, so what we need to do is we need to transfer that two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars into a reserve for tax levy fund. And it needs, it says it needs to be in an interest-bearing account, um, so when we do our taxes next year, um, this twenty-nine hundred dollars is gonna come off our tax base.
Do you have a, a number for that fund that we need to create?
I did, I wrote it down on my, the A two thirty cash reserves fund, um, it needs to go into.
A two thirty cash reserves?
Cash reserve fund, um, for tax levy.
So we need a motion to, to, uh, create that, right, Juanita?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I thought, I thought it was preparing for.
So I do have that information. So what we have to do is we have to open, we have to do A six ninety-five, which is deferred tax revenue, excess tax, which is our reserve for excess tax. So we'll have to put, put that into that reserve fund, and then the following year, we take it out and we put it against our taxes, um, for next year. So then, we can't collect that next year.
So the motion would be to open an A six ninety-five reserve for excess tax?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
But not the A two thirty, what you said? That's a cash reserve, it's, it's a cash account called cash reserves.
So it's the A six ninety-five, is that what you?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion that we need to open an A six ninety-five reserve for excess tax. And you need this amount, this dollar amount for it as well?
Yep, that's.
And I'm putting in two thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Eighty-eight, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
I'm sorry, I wrote that wrong, it's clear with my brain again.
Is there a second on that motion, second? Other discussion? Do we, we don't, do we need a roll call on that kind of formation, like, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Juanita. Did that take care of it?
I'm not so convinced.
Yeah, are you sure?
I'm just thinking, maybe we'll be able to do a roll call, because it has to do with money.
Yeah, that's, that was why I wondered, yeah, let's do a roll call.
Trusty Malinsky, trustee Tremblay, trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Merrick Patrick.
Aye. Alright, great. Uh, now I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective negotiations.
So move.
Second?
Uh, you need, you need the motion to close your regular meeting?
No, I looked that up and it said enough.
Oh, cool, that's easier.
No, I think probably. Okay, alright. Uh, all in favor, coming out of the executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.